I'd like to call the June 15, 2021 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at this meeting. We now come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We now come to public comment. Let me just read the procedures for public comment. The time limit for each individual is three minutes. You'll see a red light when your time is up, and please discontinue your public comments when your time's up. We want to give each of the... I'm sorry, did I miss something? I did miss good news. Let's do good news, then we'll do public comments. Sorry about that. It was not on my... We all need as much good news as we can get, so we'll take it. We'll take it. All right. We have to report under good news regarding the NACO Awards Performance Management Training Update. Oof, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Presley.
Just finished my lunch just in time, so... Yeah, excited to be here today. Rafael Baptista with Performance Management, excited to share some good news. I actually have two items of good news today that are intertwined. As you might recall, two weeks ago, I came here and we talked about the creation of a culture strategy and innovation in Buncombe County and the need and all the work we were doing. Today's good news is both an accomplishment of the work we've done towards that culture, but also the work we're doing towards building that culture. So I'll start with the accomplishment, which is the NACO Awards. So each year, the National Association of Counties recognizes county programs across the country that are leaders in best practices in their relevant areas. And for the second straight year, Buncombe County has won a couple of those awards. So we submitted three applications, and we won three. So, and they span three different focus areas. So the first award we won was for the One Buncombe Fund for economic development efforts to support small businesses impacted by COVID-19. We won an award through the Sheriff's Office for the Medication Assisted Treatment Program in the Buncombe County Jail Detention Facility. I was really excited about that one because when I went through all the awards, there was no one else looking at opioid use and substance abuse for folks in detention. So this was a really unique program that won. And thirdly, especially excited because it was my department that did this work, was we won for the Department of Business Plan Process to create business plans to support your strategic plan. So really excited and hoping to win, bring home even more awards next year. The best is yet to come. The second good news is that as part of that effort to create a culture strategy and innovation, we need to build a skill set around continuous improvement. How do we identify problems and solve them? How do we make our processes better? And a great way to do that is through Lean Six Sigma, which is one of the most respected practices for process improvement. So 10 county employees representing three different departments in multiple focus areas recently went through and got certified at a Lean Six Sigma Green Belt Level by Western Carolina University, were already working on projects to bring that home and to expand that knowledge and that training throughout the organization. So thank you for your support of all these efforts, and I was happy to be able to present to you some good news. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Rafael. We appreciate the updates and congratulations to all the county employees who did this great work and for the staff who helped put the proposals forward to recognize their great work. We really appreciate it. It's well deserved. All right, now we come to public comment. Let me just go over the protocol real quick. The time limit for each individual is three minutes. You'll have a yellow light when you've got 30 seconds and a red light when your time's up, and please discontinue speaking when your time's up. We want to make sure we give all residents the same amount of time to speak to the Board. If your time expires, you can leave any questions along with your name, address, and phone number with our county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during the public comment period. This is our time to listen to the public. So who would like to address the Board this evening or any public comments? We'll start right here and then we'll go to Grant. You'll be second, okay?
Thank you for the time. My name is Carl Soulsby. I live at 82 West Oak View. I was here about a month ago concerning a project that I'm doing out on Sand Hill Road. I have asked Mr. Frue to pass out some plat copies that you have. I'm a little bit limited right now to give you some more information. I had recently given some information to an individual and had tried to get it to this Board, and someone along the process had told this individual, a certain individual told me, that there was a process that Ms. Pender had put in place, and this is not about Ms. Pender, that where you would go through the protocols to get information to this Board. And when I asked what the result was of passing that information, it seems that that individual was told that they might want to just let that lay. Now, I'm a licensed general contractor, conducting business in the county, and I resent that. Not only that, but the reason I'm here this evening, and I don't know who made that comment, I'm just saying that it's inappropriate. But if you'll look at the deed that you have on the plat, you have a plat that's recorded, which is a copy that I sent up there, and I'll try to make this brief. I know I'm limited. It's found on Book 218 and Page 43, and you're going to find lots five and six, or Six New Grace and Ten New Grace that I pulled the permits on to move forward on. However, after I got my permits, I jumped through the hoops of everything that was required in the permitting process, and when I went on the Buncombe County GIS website and downloaded the map, the two lots that are recorded on this plat that I record, the physical addresses are reversed. Now, if you know anything about building, you've got to pull the permits, you've got to have a lean affidavit, you've got to have builder's risk. Not only that, but you've got to have right of ways and easements, and they have to correctly identify these particular properties, and I have several on those properties. After numerous attempts to try and have the Planning and Zoning Department to correct an error on their part, they called these offices and gave them the incorrect information that you're going to find if you look on the Buncombe GIS website. I spent all day, and I expressly said in an email, and I have a copy of it here, I'll leave it for you, you can read it at your leisure if you wish, that no one in that office has my consent to change anything on this plat. None. Now, I've had two attorneys address this situation and bring it to the attention of the director down there, and they were pretty much told that that's not going to happen. Now, I don't mind the rules, and I play by the rules, but the people that work in those offices work for us, the taxpayers. We don't work for them. They can change these addresses all they want to, but for now, he needs to leave it. And I appreciate your time, because at the end of the day, I pay him.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, Grant, are you going to get started?
Okay, Grant Millen, longtime Buncombe resident with support. I may run for Asheville City Council. And I came down here partly to talk about the racial equity action plan, which the body of it, the six main goal areas are huge. It will be monumental to get more people communicating, engaging, and the concepts and terms, though, your staff, I can tell is very zealous about this subject. And I care a lot about equity, and I'm going to be talking about persons with disabilities because it's not just you and your staff, it's City of Asheville and you all who have, I guess you just hear a little bit about the Americans with Disabilities Act, and you think it's all done and said and done for persons with disabilities. But, because, so I'm going to talk about some other things, but that racial equity action plan, most people in Buncombe don't understand what's in those concepts and terms. White fragility, that's so unnecessary to introduce some term from a book that came out in 2018. And it's sort of, in American jurisprudence, in a capital crime case, you get into intent and such and what's in people's minds, but otherwise, we don't, your job isn't to wonder about what's in people's minds. And white fragility, you could talk about, I wanted to start talking about analogies about Jewish fragility or black fragility. It's not a place to go when you're trying to talk about Asheville African-Americans, 71% of Ashville's, well, in your case, Buncombe's, African-Americans are living in public housing. And that comes from the City of Asheville 2019 Equity Action Plan. I'm one of the very few people who talk about that factoid. It's, a factoid isn't the right word for it. That is huge to integrate. I don't know if that's the right word, but do we just, are we just talking about things like white fragility and microaggressions? I don't want to do this, and I want you to tell the commissioners how many people showed up at those 11 sites. I think you did engagement around that action plan, and you went to 11 sites like libraries in Weaverville and Black Mountain out at the Fairview Library. I'm wondering who showed up? And this is the beginning, this is the beginning, I'm going to talk about the Safety and Justice Challenge and a lot of other things.
Yes, sir.
Everybody.
Good evening.
Just want to say thank you for this forum and being back in. Thank you. But yeah, I just want to say thanks for having this in person. It's nice to get back to business. But I wanted to also say thank you for the pause that you guys put on the potential closure of the Oakley Library. I realize that that was something that came up as a result of a consultant that had recommended that we might close that asset in our community. Another thank you is, I should extend another thank you also because we were putting our Neighborhood Association together, forming it right as this issue came up, and I can't ask, I couldn't have asked for a more galvanizing issue to have gotten a big group of people all together and really riled up. Otherwise, we're going to be talking about parliamentary, this and that, you know, what kind of bylaws we wanted to put in place. So when this came on the agenda, within a couple of days, we had 75 people show up. And I think as a result, you guys had listened, we had a lot of letters written and emails written to y'all, and appreciate y'all listening and putting that pause on it. And we look forward to the public engagement sessions that are going to be coming our way. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And you can go next, after the speaker.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Elizabeth McDavid. I'm, I live in Oakley. I'm the leader of the Oakley Neighborhood Association, and I would like to follow up on Michael's point and thank you for putting the pause on the library, potential library closure, especially for Oakley Library. And to ask you to, I guess, first of all, remind, or I don't need to remind you, but just to point out that one of your strategic goals is to have services that benefit the community within walking and biking distance. And so asking you to, when considering any library actions, that you think about the Oakley Library and the large community that it serves, because it's not only Oakley, but it's also Shiloh, and the socioeconomic status of those people, it's mostly working class and poor people, although it is mixed, but also to, you know, bear that in mind when you, when you make another action on this library issue, to have services closer to the people so that they can walk or bike. And what I think Oakley Library needs is to be renovated and to be enlarged and still be in Oakley. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mina Tovish. I speak today to urge you to find an effective way to mitigate the cost of higher assessments and increased mill rates on our most vulnerable homeowners. I think it's appropriate for a city and county to offer support to these homeowners who need it the most. So we're getting, I'm going to get into some specifics real fast. I'd be happy to leave a copy of this with whomever or email it to you afterwards. I propose that rebates be structured in the following manner. Homeowners should be automatically enrolled in rebates if they meet specific criteria that are identifiable by city and county staff based entirely on property tax records. Citizens should not need to do anything, no forms, no documentation, no application. Eligibility for residential property rebates should be based on meeting all three of the following criteria. Selected to target homeowners of at least a decade whose properties are modest in value and who are therefore most likely to experience hardship from increased taxes. Those three criteria are: tenure, same-party homeownership for at least two assessment cycles. Second one is property assessment increase. The property value should have risen at least 30% over the last two assessments. And the third is property value. Total property value is 80% or less of the area median residential assessment. Staff can generate a list of PINs, that's parcel identification numbers, that satisfy these three criteria and automatically earmark those residential properties for rebates. The rebates should equal the extra amount of taxes owed for the property under the new millage rate. The result for the owners of those residential properties that meet those three criteria would be no net tax increase. The variables are, of course, subject to adjustment, but using county tax data with the assistance of Rich Lee, we estimate the number of rebated properties would be approximately 20,780, of which about 14,000 are in the county and about 6,600 are in the city. That means one in six of total residential properties would essentially have their tax bills frozen at 2019 amounts. We did a rough calculation. It would take an extra .7 mil tax, that's .007% of property value, to cover rebates for every house under 250K and over 10 years on the deed. That is, on a $300,000 house in the county that didn't qualify, that would be only a $21 increase. In the city, a 300K house would have a $42 higher bill. Please don't make people document their need with tax returns or other paperwork. The beauty of this system is that it puts no burden on the taxpayer to apply for it. There may be a few property owners who will get a debate who don't need it, but that's a small price to pay for a system that is easy to administer and its targeting, takes little staff time, requires no outreach or education costs, and presents no barriers to homeowners' participation. There might be some few who slipped through the sieve. Perhaps they've transferred their home into a family trust or refinanced. There should be a simple form to fill out which would allow their circumstance to be reviewed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, who else? Any other? Mr. Yelton, and anybody, anybody else would like to speak to the Board tonight? All right, then Mr. Yelton will be our last speaker during public comment.
I don't have time to do any pleasantries. I feel like a mosquito in a nudist colony. Lots of places to go, and boy, some of them look real good. First off, I want to talk about the condition of the world, because that's one of the things you Commissioners ought to think about. You know that the leader of this nation, of the United States, has now formed an anti-terrorism group, and if you challenge the government, you're considered a terrorist, okay? I get the same feeling in Buncombe County. EPA has just come out today with a study that smoke and wildfires is dangerous to your health. My God, what a wake-up call. Now, that means you need to cut trees, harvest the forestry, keep the trees cut down. Out in California, you need to burn, have those annual burns so that it can control us, but some people don't want that. A lot of people in Asheville don't want that. Inflation is coming, folks. Guess what? Milk now costs more per gallon than a gallon of gas. Have you tried to buy a chicken lately? Former CDC director believes COVID-19 emerged from lab. Now who's compromised? Equity, race, just listen and look at how much money and energy is going into less than 10% of the population in Buncombe County. I have nothing against blacks or whites or pinks or browns, but the population in Buncombe County that's black is less than 10%, so we've got spending, if you look at your agenda, 95% of your time addressing that 10%, period, end of discussion. That's not wise management. Federal Department, Department of Education, is now pushing critical race theory. And if any of you have any doubts about it, and I guess suggest that Grant Millen read that book right there. Critical Response to the 1619 Project, Peter Doublewood. It is by intellectuals, and it tells you exactly what's behind the 1619 project. And I see the Juneteenth deal out here. How many of you realize that the Emancipation Proclamation did not apply to the northern states? Oh, did you not know that? It didn't apply to the northern states, only to the states that left the Union, okay? Kind of like itself was racist. Now then, environmentalism and climate change has now been defined as religion by the environmental in Europe. So once it's a religion, it's got freedom of religion. It can do whatever it wants to. Won't take challenges, push solar panels when we talk about it. Now, have you seen the little girl from Columbia University that was from North Korea? She said she went to Columbia to learn to think. They told her what to think. It was worse than in North Korea. Folks, y'all need to open up and have a discussion, not sit up there pious, because I've been asking how much a library costs from Wanda Green, Mandy Stone, and now I'm asking it again. How much does it cost each book to go out of the library?
All right, thank you all so much for taking time to... Oh, was there one other person? Did you want to speak, sir?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is.
All right, please.
I just wanted to say a few things. There's been no public debate on the Commissioners' belief and declaration that racism is systemic and a public health crisis. No public debate. You can pass resolutions and proclamations from now until eternity, but that's not going to turn that belief into a fact. Yet, you're spending time and money on racial equity and action plan and the NDO. On the, on the racial equity action plan, I have to ask, what efforts were undertaken to include conservative representation in the planning activities? And I would ask you to compare that to efforts to include people who do not speak English, homeless people, LGBTQ people. What effort was made to bring conservative voices into that discussion? Maybe there was some, but I'm not aware of it. Not only with the racial equity plan, I see that you're looking at the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee recommendations, and I'm just not, I'm not seeing any of these calls for public comment, so I don't, I don't know how you can start reaching out to conservatives a little bit. There should be a conservative voice on each of these panels, and maybe there's not enough conservatives to go around to do all of that, but we need to be asked to give our thoughts on these topics. Looking at the, at the NDO website, I just ask, how will businesses be protected from media scrutiny and destruction of their lifelong dream? When someone goes in, makes a claim, the claim turns out to be invalid. Meanwhile, though, the media has jumped all over the business, saying how racist they are, how discriminatory they are against lesbians and gays. So I just think there should be some consideration given to this NDO, which, which I don't agree with anyway, but I think there should be some consideration given to the people who might be adversely impacted by the ordinance. That's all I had. Thank you.
All right, thank you for taking time. All right, and thank you all, to all the members of the public who took time to speak to the Board this evening. The next item on our agenda is under Presentations, and we're going to get an update from the Economic Development Coalition, and Clark Duncan, the Executive Director, is going to help us out with this item. Thanks for being here, Clark.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, thank you for this opportunity to be with you, and thank you for your ongoing partnership with the Economic Development Coalition. I am proud to share... Thank you. That we remain accredited for best practices in the profession of economic development and innovation in the field, one of only 62 such economic development organizations in North America. That's a credit first to our 20-person Board, including County Appointee Commissioner Whitesides, Ex officio Board Member and County Manager Avril Pender, and Liaison to our Board, Tim Love. Thanks to each of you for your service. That is also a tribute to this team that I wanted to introduce to you, if only virtually. Our staff is organized by the four key functions of economic development pictured here, including the world-class data analysis of reverberant research, strengthening startups and local founders through the programs of Venture Asheville, retaining, expanding, and recruiting high-wage target industry, and lastly, the important work of economic, excuse me, workforce development and economic mobility. So tonight, I'll report out on achievements of the past year in each focus area and in this order. So the fiscal year of the pandemic was noteworthy, probably for all of the wrong reasons, but I'm pleased to share some performance metrics with you this evening for the year that should provide optimism to the Commission about the economic recovery now in its early stages, with record-setting jobs, wages, and capital investment commitments made to this county in the past year. In addition, record-setting capital raised by local startups affiliated with Venture Asheville. I draw your attention to return on investment. This is determined by representing household labor income of newly announced jobs in the past fiscal year and divided by all funding provided by this Board as well as other public and private entities. And this year, that ROI exceeded $153 per single dollar invested in our mission and program of work. Throughout the difficult year, our research team was a steadying influence, providing timely data on the unfolding crisis, informing city, county, and economic coalition response to business needs while maintaining an important view of the future, including these interesting projects, most recently, release of the Creative Economy Initiative. including these interesting projects, most recently, release of the Creative Economy and Jobs Report in partnership with the Asheville Area Arts Council and a collaboration with the Land of Sky, the WNC Outdoor Economy Asset Inventory and Gap Analysis, it's a mouthful, recently awarded over $100,000 in funding from the federal EDA. Much of the past year, of course, was spent in the trenches with our manufacturing community. Many lost jobs, many pivoted creatively to serve new markets, and still others saw unprecedented demand and pressures on their production. Together with the leadership of this commission, we announced expansion of two legacy manufacturers this spring, including Systems Logistics Corporation and Borg Warner. The combined $65 million in new investment, 150 new career paths in the STEM field signaled a renewed commitment, not only to job creation for existing Buncombe County employers, but new product innovation taking place here in our county. The largest milestone, of course, was the record-setting commitment by Pratt &amp; Whitney in October of last year. The engine maker, we all know, will be investing $650 million in their new facility, creating 800 new jobs, creating this part as a part of the largest manufacturing announcement in our regional history, the fifth, the largest in the state in over five years, and the fourth largest in any U.S. county in the year 2020. But beyond the direct and lasting impact to working families of Buncombe County or to the tax base of our county, we understand that economic development projects help us advance long-held community goals and projects. And metrics featured here help tell the rest of that story. They help our community understand how strategic economic development can advance goals and values of the community, such as community prosperity and economic mobility, such as good corporate citizenship, workforce empowerment, and community philanthropy, and environmental stewardship. We know now that Buncombe County residents will be manufacturing these parts in a lead silver-certified building that are transforming air travel for the next generation, saving 16% in fuel consumption, over 50% in the emissions related to air travel, and over 75% in the noise pollution related to the jet engine. And these facts reflect the best practices of modern American manufacturing and are why we continue to champion its expansion in Buncombe County. While recruitment headlines generate more attention, our Venture Asheville Elevate Mentorship Services enable our startup entrepreneurs not only to build greater companies, but to improve their skills as managers and CEOs at the same time. Our continued investment in entrepreneurship underscores the fact that the startup of today could be the multinational of tomorrow headquartered in Buncombe County. And this year, over 19 startups were able to launch and scale through our programs, representing 276 new jobs at average wages exceeding $60,000 per year, aggregate over $82 million in new sales revenues for local startups. Another important milestone I would draw your attention to, with support of EDC staff, our participating startups attracted a record-setting $12.2 million in new investment. For context, this funding from grants, angel and equity investment, or traditional financing is the lifeblood of our startup community, funding new salaries, advancing research, piloting new products, expanding investments, and yes, investing in real estate here in Buncombe County. Transitioning to workforce and economic mobility, NextAVL is a program I'm incredibly excited about. We're able to recruit first-in-family college students or students from under-resourced communities in partnership with local universities such as UNC Asheville, Western, Warren Wilson, Montreat, and joined this year by Mars Hill College for a structured nine-month mentorship program. And our goal is quite simple, to recruit more young and more diverse talent to stay and launch their careers in Buncombe County where we need them participating. To date, over 51 students have graduated the program, and over 96% of those are now acting as ambassadors, helping us recruit the next generation of underclassmen to participate. This fiscal year also saw the pilot launch of inclusive hiring partners. Buncombe County is an important partner to us in that initiative. This initiative connects job seekers who are receiving case management services with local employers who are looking for good talent in an attempt to bridge the opportunity gap that too many in our community face. I'd like to recognize the leadership of all agencies featured on this slide for their work day in and day out that lifts our families and our communities in generational poverty or experiencing justice involvement or substance abuse disorder. In June of 2020, excuse me, this initiative became one of only 10 across the state of North Carolina to receive funding from Golden Leaf. The past pilot year saw 21 local employers registered. Those 21 workplaces trained with best-in-class diversity training from the Lenore Ryan Diversity and Equity Institute, and over 60 job seekers enrolled and in the interview and placement process. We look forward to return even more impressive metrics to you in the years to come. In closing, as a public-private partnership, our staff and our board take very seriously the obligation of excellence and transparency to our stakeholders, both in business, in government, as well as the community at large. As illustrated here in FY '22, Buncombe County will fund just over 30% of our operating budget through annual contract. We're able to leverage your important investment with additional public support from our city, from the North Carolina Golden Leaf Foundation, and today, over 50% of funding raised through the work of our professional staff. This includes everything from our AVL Five-by-Five campaign, sponsorships, events, customized research projects, and consulting services. It is indeed my privilege to serve this team and advance our shared vision for growing community prosperity in partnership with the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. So on behalf of our staff and on behalf of our board, thank you for your strong and continued support. Our full printed annual report will be released on Thursday at our annual meeting. We'll also make sure copies get to your office. I'd be pleased to take any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Clark, thank you for that presentation. Any questions? Clark, thank you so much for being with us. Thanks for, appreciate the good work of the Economic Development Coalition, and thanks for being with us tonight.
I appreciate your time.
All right. We do not have any public hearings this evening. Any county manager?
No, no report.
And nothing under old business. So we come to new business, and the first item is consideration of the Buncombe County Racial Equity Action Plan. And DK Wesley, our Assistant County Manager, is going to present this item.
Good evening, commissioners. It is with an abundance of gratitude that I'm here today and join with two members from the Equity Inclusion Work Group to present for your consideration the county's first racial equity action plan. Tonight with me is Chris Bubanek, who is a planner with the Recreation Services Department, as well as Leonard Jones, who is a community development specialist for the Communication and Public Engagement Department. Tonight, we'll provide some background on the journey that the Equity and Inclusion Work Group took to prepare the draft plan. We'd also like to give you all an update on the work that has occurred from a community input and engagement perspective since we last provided an update in December of 2020. We'll also give a high-level overview of the Racial Equity Action Plan. The complete document was attached to your agenda for your review. Also think it's important to walk through some of the critical milestones that we took to develop the plan. With your approval tonight, in the event that you approve this plan, we'd like to move forward next steps. And so we'd like to preview some of those initial next steps for the plan. So background and foundation. Of course, all of you are aware of the strategic plan process that occurred, which started, interesting enough, in July of 2019. One of my first days with the county was spent, a long day with you all, starting to work on this plan. The plan was adopted in May of 2020. It included equity as not only a value, but also a foundational focus area. And then later on in the summer, the commission took two very courageous steps with two resolutions. The first resolution was a resolution declaring racism in public health a safety crisis, the second being a resolution to support community reparations for black people in Buncombe County. The strategic plan guided our work, and those affirming resolutions helped to us to craft where we would move forward. Again, we provided a check-in to you all in December, and we appreciate the support that you provided at that time. If you don't have any question, initial questions, I'll pass it off to the team.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Leonard Jones. I'm an E&amp;I work group member, as well as the county's community development specialist. I would like to give some background on the action planning process. We started with very intentional foundational work. This foundational work was supported and facilitated by outside consultant Cortina Cardell. She facilitated a series of sessions where we established shared definitions, created a mission statement, and participated in discussions about equity and race specific to Buncombe County. It was also during this time that the group reviewed quantitative and qualitative data that brought us to the consensus that our work should lead with race. We also began to draft a plan which is grounded in government alliance for race and equity framework. And consolidation ideas, the entire team presented ideas and focus areas and initiatives utilizing current data model and model plans, also aligned in the RBI framework and the county business planning. Now I'd like to share the comprehensive engagement and feedback efforts. This included an internal review for staff within the organization, community partners, and the public at large. As you will see, we utilized various communication and marketing vehicles, a video promoting the draft plan, Spanish-language versions of the plan, community input sessions, and surveys. After promoting the plan, we transitioned to organizational internal review of the other plan and feedback sessions. As an organization, we had over 25 departmental, departmental meetings and three employee input sessions where all employees were welcome to participate and give us feedback and critique. We had about 10% of the workforce who chose to participate. After an internal review of the plan, we took the draft plan to the community. On behalf of the E&amp;I work group, we thank y'all for y'all's support in these efforts. And we appreciate those commissioners who had the opportunity to participate in the community input sessions. We had about 11 community input sessions, which was open to strategic partners with the county, but also to the community at large. I had the privilege of facilitating the youth input sessions, and I was thoroughly impressed with their level of enthusiasm, engagement, and their critical feedback they gave us. All this feedback was consolidated and reviewed in order to update the draft plan. Listed here is a few of the comments suggesting trends that we got from the, from the comments and surveys. For example, focus on measurable outcomes, timeliness, accountability, report progress, and continue authentic community engagement. As a result, we moved, removed draft measures from the plan, and the equity data team has begun to refine the plan and start data collection. We added introductory letters explaining the why and how, including an enhanced list of equity concepts and terms and other minor adjustments. I will pass it to Chris to preview the plan's components.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Chris Bubanek, a planner with the Recreation Services Department, a member of the Equity and Inclusion Work Group, and a proud Buncomian. Tonight, I'm happy to join with you to preview the draft of the Racial Equity Action Plan. While I highlight some important examples of big-picture items, it's more of a view from 30,000 feet in the air, and the actual plan has much greater detail. As with all tasks of this magnitude, the people of Buncombe County have been our guiding star throughout the, throughout its progression. This has been an intentional process over the past several months to establish mutual trust between community members, stakeholders, and partners, as well as to figure out just what it means when we say Buncombe County Government is an organization that champions inclusiveness and social equity. Community and organizational engagement sessions have refined and focused the plan, but you'll notice much flexibility remains. This is a good thing. The plan is intended to allow space for continued evolution as we continue this journey together as a community. As you can see from the draft document that was included in your board packet, the plan includes focus areas, initiatives, and actions to support important, high-level, big-picture goals. To ensure accountability, various county departments have been assigned to take ownership and hold responsibility for each goal and initiative. As an extension of our organization's One Buncombe philosophy, multiple departments will collaborate together on each goal to achieve the essential equity promise that we are making with the community. As Leonard mentioned, one revision from the previous version of the original draft plan is the realignment of tools to measure outcomes. Buncombe County's team will take more time to develop those measures through the results-based accountability framework, and as always, with the help of our community partners and the people of Buncombe County. You may notice the plan is organized like the board's strategic plan, with goals identified as either foundational or community. Foundational goals are internal to the community organization and to our own workforce. Community goals are external-facing, to be developed and implemented within the greater community. The goals in both of these categories work in tandem and are imperative to ensure Buncombe County is a livable, resilient, and vibrant place in which everyone has the opportunity to be strong, healthy, and successful. Foundational-level initiatives include reviewing current guidelines and procedures with the application of an equity lens to develop fair and unbiased policies, as well as developing processes that ensure we recruit, engage, and retain a team for Buncombe County that acts as the gold standard in ways that ensure equitable opportunities. While there are currently some areas where data is known, there are still many unknowns in which data collection is warranted, including disparities in our procurement processes and impacts of codes and policies. Community-level initiatives include an assessment of the current state of racial disparities within our community in order to create a standard reference profile of equity and existing initiatives within Buncombe County with the help of community partners. Additionally, there are initiatives to enhance community participation and increase diverse representation on the county's boards and commissions. This all hearkens back to the idea that mutual trust is the only way to achieve the ambitious goals put forth in this plan. As mentioned, these are high-level goals, and during implementation, we intend to further define and refine the way we get from the place in which we stand today and the place our community wants and deserves to be. It will only happen with the help of our community and every single person who calls our little corner of the world their home. Thank you very much. DK will now close our presentation.
Thank you, Chris and Leonard. We thought it was important to talk a little bit about the work and the review that occurred for the plan. It took about 16 months for the Equity and Inclusion Work Group to get to the point where they felt comfortable that this plan was ready for prime time. Once that initial draft was developed, it was taken to the county manager, the county manager's office. There was a review and revision that happened there. Then after that, we took the plan to the Management Advisory Group, which is a core group of department heads that help to drive policy and implementation administration of the government. Then we took the plan to the department heads. Now, this was very critical because, as Chris mentioned, the department heads are going to be accountable for implementing this plan. Our Equity and Inclusion Work Group members actually spent one-on-one time with each department head, reviewed the plan, talked about the items in the plan that, that directly impacted their departments, and took any feedback and revision at that time. After the check-in, we went out to the community, went out to county staff. I won't go over that because Leonard went over a significant amount of detail about the outcomes from that. Today, we're here asking that you all consider approval of this racial equity action plan. In the event that you approve this plan, there are some next steps and in the implementation that we want to walk through. We have started some work on what that will look like. We've completed the establishment of the county equity training team and a equity data team. As you're all aware, that data is going to have to drive the work that we do. So those teams are established, and they've already started work. Also underway, we are defining and redefine, refining our outcome measures. Our CAPE team has created a first iteration of an equity webpage that we hope to go live on July 1st. The training team has started to develop curriculum around equity that we will share with the entire organization. Some upcoming efforts will be to develop a very comprehensive engagement plan around this action plan. We'll have a second iteration of the webpage. We'll have a second iteration of the website, which will include a dashboard, and we'll work on how we report our progress out to the community and leadership. Before I turn it over to you all, all of our Equity and Inclusion Work Group members could not be here today, but I'd be remiss not to thank them publicly, each and every one of them. The last 16 months have been hard work. You know, all of them have full-time jobs, but they've prioritized this work and really put their best foot forward, so I want to thank them publicly. I'd also like to thank some of the staff that's not a part of the Equity and Inclusion Work Group, who also supported this work, and that would be Performance Management Staff. And she won't like this, but I want to thank our fearless leader. Avril has really provided the leadership and support that we needed and given us space and flexibility to really work on this plan, and so we really appreciate her leadership on this. And I'll turn it over to you all.
All right, DK, thank you so much. We appreciate you and the other folks who helped out with the presentation this evening and all the folks who have worked on this important process to get us to this evening. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? I think so.
For my day job, I do community engagement and public input-related work for a living, and so I know that it's hard.
Yeah, it's on. Can you hear me now?
Speak right into it, maybe.
I have four in front of me, so. Okay. Community engagement's difficult, public input is difficult. I've never seen anything better than this in my time working with local government and outside of local government. I followed along with this plan as an elected official and before, you know, on the campaign trail, and just want to commend you, DK and Lillian, and the work group and everything you did. The plan itself, the website, the public input sessions that I attended were fantastic. And I just think that, you know, as we look to hire consultants in the future for the county to do public input and other things, I think they have big shoes to fill and to match up with. So I thank you. And I also say that, you know, as we look to, as we move forward, trying to think of how to define the answer to the question, what does reparations mean for county government and what does it mean for Buncombe County specifically, it's really important that we have this foundation and this level of public interest and public input and this to look back on along the way. So I thank you for that as well, and our future selves will thank you as well.
Just echo that appreciation. You all didn't just do this in any 16-month period. This has been, you know, an extraordinarily challenging time for everyone, but also it feels like a really important time for us to have dug deep around our commitments to equity. And this document feels robust and really grounded in community values around justice and fairness, and it feels very significant to be moving past the point of us talking about this into starting to have the pillars for how we will do this and live into this. So this stuff doesn't just happen, and I just want to say thank you to all the community members who've been part of this process and all the staff who've led it. And I understand this was a team that, there were many other staff who wanted to be part of it, and want to say thank you to them as well. And I think that says a lot about the organization here and what it will mean for us to work together to live into this and have this really be a guide star as we move forward. So thank you all. I'll be very proud to cast a vote in support of it when we get to that point.
I want to, too, I want to thank you for the job well done. You know, over the years, I've been a part of quite a few equity plans, but this is by far the best that I've seen. And we can tell from reading it, I know I can, the work that you put into it to make it come to pass. And as I read it last night again, I couldn't help but think of a conversation I had back in 1962 when I was a pup. I was a freshman in college, and a group of us were talking to Dr. King at Morehouse, Martin Luther King Jr. And you know, he told us then, he said that working for equity and inclusion for you boys will be a lifetime job. And you know, I think of it today and where we come and hopefully where we're going. And when I think about it, I was 18 then, and when I look at how old I am now, and we're still working on it, but I do feel that we're getting somewhere finally. Because when we put this in place here in Buncombe County, all we need now, and you have the groundwork for it, the foundation, we just need to put it in place to hold everybody accountable and to make sure that we measure what we're doing. I mean, that is critical. And you know, too, I know a lot of people talk about when you look at diversity and inclusion, and in Buncombe County, we're what, 5%, 6% or whatever it is of the population, or maybe 9% when you're all the different groups who are included. But what we forget, though, it is a small group, but let's rethink back when we think about history. It was a small group of my ancestors who built America on the backs of their free labor. So I think you do owe us something, and at least we're beginning to get there. Because when we talk of reparations, there's no way you can pay us. And when I say us, I'm talking about African-Americans, because I can go back to slavery. I remember my great-grandmom, when I was the fifth generation of our family, I have the picture now. But when you think of the contributions that we have made, the inventions that were taken away from us, and when you see that we don't have the generational wealth that we should have, at least let's start now making up for some of it. And, you know, I'll be the first to say, you can't make up for it, you know, financially, but we can make up for it by doing the right thing and level of playing field going forward. And I will be voting for the plan tonight. Thanks.
Thank you all. This is really incredible. And as I read the first reiteration, and again, what this has done for me is it helps to, I think, for us to lay the groundwork. To me, this is just the beginning of where we are as Buncombe County and says where we want to go, and this is the starting point for that work and committing to the work for the long haul. This isn't just through 2025. This is for the foreseeable future. I've said many times that part of what we do as government is to take care of people, and we are acknowledging that our communities of color have not been treated equitably and fairly, and we are working to take care of them in a really thoughtful way. The thoughtfulness, the thoroughness, and the kindness and compassion that went into this work really needs to be commended to each of you all for the time that you committed to caring for the people here in Buncombe County. I'm incredibly proud to support this this evening because these aren't just words. These are actions, and that's what we need to be focused on. Thank you so much, DK, and to the entire group who spent countless hours working on
Any other comments, or is there a motion?
I move that we pass the Racial Equity Plan. We approve it.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you again to all the county staff and all the members of the community who worked together to bring us to this point tonight and who helped carry this forward. It's future work as well. Thank you so much. Okay, Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the FY 2022 budget, and Jennifer Barnett is back with us to help us out with this and to get us ready to vote on the budget this evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. It is difficult to believe that we started this budget journey way back in December, so... The recommended budget was presented on May 18th, and the required public hearing was held on June the 1st. So therefore, this evening, we are asking for your approval of the fiscal year 2022 budget plan. A few quick highlights. The fiscal year 2022 recommended general fund budget totals $360 million, $394,615. As you know, it was a revaluation year, and the recommended tax rate is 48.8 cents, two cents above the calculated revenue neutral. As is required for the budget cycle following a tax reappraisal year, the revenue-neutral rate is calculated not only for the county property tax but also for all other taxing districts under the scope of the county's responsibility. Of the 25 districts, eight are recommended at revenue-neutral, 12 are recommended above revenue-neutral, ranging from .7 cents to 2.39 cents above revenue-neutral. In addition, the Asheville City Schools supplemental tax rate is recommended at the revenue-neutral tax rate of 10.62 cents. There are two budget ordinances that require adoption. The first is the annual funds ordinance, which establishes the annual budget for all annual funds. It also includes the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 fee schedule and the position, classification, and pay plan. These documents have been posted with the agenda and have been made available. The second is the capital projects, project funds ordinance. This makes necessary budget amendments to update the multi-year funds to align with any appropriations from the annual funds and for any recommended projects. The requested action from the board is to approve the two ordinances, the annual funds ordinance and the capital projects funds ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jennifer. Commissioners, are there any questions about the budget? We've had many budget work sessions about this, and as well as discussion at our public hearing and other recent commission meetings. So are there any other questions that Commissioners want to ask before we consider a motion on budget adoption? Or comments that you'd make? Is there a motion? Let's first do, is there a motion regarding the annual funds ordinance?
Bernie, could you maybe quickly outline what all we have to do here procedurally?
I think we're going to need two separate motions. The first motion, let's say, would be regarding approval of the annual funds ordinance, and then after that one is adopted, we need a budget, a motion on the capital project funds ordinance.
I move that we approve the annual fund ordinance.
A second.
All right, there's a motion and a second regarding adoption of the proposed annual funds ordinance. We have talked about this a lot.
I have, I have a number of comments on why I'm supporting this budget. I guess I was expecting to...
Yeah, feel free to share.
Your others, but...
Yeah, for my...
Yeah, I got the one that works. So I'll go ahead and highlight why I'm excited to support this budget. You know, I want this community to be a place where anyone of any age, ability, or wealth can enjoy a full life. This budget includes a historically-sized $2.4 million investment in affordable housing that includes supporting rental assistance, emergency home repairs, working to keep families in the homes they have today, and the creation of more than 240 new affordable residential dwellings. This budget puts an ambitious stake in the ground with $3.7 million in investments in the children of Buncombe County. Early childhood grants that will support new classrooms, teachers, and educational opportunities for even more children in their crucial first 2,000 days. If the state and federal governments continue to fail to provide what is necessary in the form of universal pre-K, we'll simply have to continue to go it alone. This budget also invests in emergency services. We need to set our emergency services and EMS system up for success and for growth to match our growing community. So I'm glad this budget increases the capital improvement budget by, their improvement budget by $1 million. And that brings me to community paramedicine and that pilot program, which I'm proud to see we are providing funding for to evolve the program from a grant-funded pilot to an innovative essential service for the community. I see this form of reimagined emergency response that also provides peer support and treatment options, evolving into a core service that our local government provides the community. It can and will provide an incalculable amount of community benefits as well as measurable downstream taxpayer savings. And I just want to be clear that if we're going to make the program permanent and advertise our intent to grow the program, and I think we should, then this board alongside this community must commit to keeping it that way and to budgeting it appropriately. This budget will also enable Buncombe County to put more conservation easements in place. We can change our community for the better through revitalization, infill development, and density that enables us to prevent and mitigate the damage of sprawl while providing much-needed housing. Conservation easements will allow us to protect land with the highest ecological value, protecting this uniquely beautiful place that we call home in our safe drinking water and clean air. Bringing our land conservation investments up to 3/4 of $1 million shows this community that we take the importance of conserving precious undeveloped land seriously. I support this budget, and I just want to thank you for the community's input, all the staff for their work, and to my fellow Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Parker. That was, I think you captured probably a lot of sentiments on the board about important elements of this plan, so thanks for sharing that. Any comments from other Commissioners?
I think what we need to point out, too, even though we increased the tax rate 2 cents over revenue-neutral, we made sure we struggled and I think did a good job of making sure that we held the tax rate down while still giving the quality of service that we're used to, because that's something that's critical. And you know, coming into this, I always thought, wow, we can hold everything at revenue-neutral, but that's not always possible, because in doing that, sometimes if we do it, we can end up cutting services, too. But I think the critical piece is that we're holding it down, the tax rate, but while still giving the services, and we put the fund in place, we hope, to help the people who are struggling with their taxes, to help them, because that's critical, too, when people have worked all their lives and paid for their real estate, and we sure don't want to tax them out of it. But I will be voting for the budget.
Thank you both for this comment. I agree with a lot of those. I just want to lift up in particular the exciting expansion of funding we're seeing around early childhood education. And really commend the group of local early childhood education providers who will be receiving the grants that are packaged under that. It's really exciting projects that include things like addressing the professional development pipeline and teacher pay, include ensuring that children have access to trauma-informed support around behavioral health issues, and the creation of a large early childhood center on the grounds of Emma Elementary that will really be a model in our community of what's possible. So just want to take a moment to say thank you to all the community partners working on that front, as well as to the members, the community members who serve on the Early Childhood Education Development Committee. Very excited about the work ahead as we embark on a planning process around expanding access to quality pre-K, and very excited that with the passage of this year's funding, we will exceed the $11 million mark that's gone to early childhood education in the last three years from locally invested funds. And just want to take a moment to kind of note that. I think it's really significant, feels like another way in which we're sort of trying to walk the talk of commitments around equity and creating a community where every kiddo has an equal chance to thrive. So thank you to this commission. So thank you to this commission, especially to Commissioners Presley and Whiteside for your stalwart leadership on that, and also to staff, including Rachel Nygaard and many others who support the work of that committee. And just really excited about these funds, the work these funds will do in the lives of children in our community.
I have just a couple of comments I wanted to make. Appreciate everyone's comments. I really share a lot of those sentiments. Just also want to acknowledge we have a lot of the folks from the leadership of the Buncombe County Volunteer Fire Districts with us this evening. We want to thank all of you for your work with us to help shape this budget this year, and we appreciate all the work that you do to help keep people and neighborhoods safe throughout Buncombe County. We're glad that this budget is going to allow greater investment in taking care of the people and the facilities that make that work possible. So thank you to all of you for what you do. I want to acknowledge we have Sheriff Quentin Miller with us this evening. We appreciate all the work of you and your team at the Sheriff's Department, and thank you for all of your work with us on the budget this year and all of the service that you provide to our community in what's been a difficult year and also looking ahead. So thank you to all of you for your work in helping keep people safe in Buncombe County. You know, the only other comment I would just make on the budget, I think we have wrestled with how we can lower the rate in a revaluation year, yet still invest in some of our implementation of our strategic plan. You know, one of the things I would say, kind of looking forward, is that I think our staff have commented that they feel confident that we can keep this tax rate for at least a couple of years. I would really like to challenge our board and our staff to think about trying to maintain this rate for a longer period of time into the future, which won't be easy to do. We don't know how the economy will change in the coming years, but you know, I think we're all hopeful that our economy is going to be strongly continuing to rebound coming out of the last year's disruptions. So I just want to kind of share that that's, that's a personal goal of mine, is to hope that we can maintain that rate for the future, talking about years, years ahead, but I just want to say it out loud that that's a, that's a goal that, that I would like to work towards. Commissioners, are there any other comments before we vote on the proposed motion?
Yes Chairman, I'd like to just commend the staff on what a great job they've done. Like I say, going back revenue neutral, we did drop it four cent, but we're still two cent up. And it was just not for this year. It says in Chairman said, that we can keep this for years to come and not have a tax increase every year. I mean, the services we've got, that we've got to continue to carry on in the coming year and years after is, I hate tax increases much as anyone else, but this is Buncombe County and us people that's lived here for 50, 60 years, everybody's wanting to live here now. And whenever you do that, that just raises the cost of what it costs to live here. So I appreciate everything staff done. I appreciate that we was able to look at this for four or five weeks and set all this through to us at the end like it has my last four budget that we've done. So thank you staff. I wish we could cut it more, but there was just no way with everything that we done. Right.
All right Commissioners.
Last comment.
Yes.
I also want to thank the staff, particularly Jennifer, who ensured that every single question that we asked was answered, no matter what time of day we asked it. So really appreciate your commitment to transparency and integrity Jennifer, thank you. The second thing I do want to know in regards to the increase, as we've heard from a lot of constituents across Buncombe County, that we are indeed receiving recovery funds that are coming in about $50 million. I think we would be remiss if we do not address that those funds cannot be used to offset this particular budget and moving forward. I know even as late as running into this meeting, had a text from someone saying, please use those funds and not an increase. I think had we been able to do that, we probably would have had some different conversations. But I am very proud of this budget and really appreciate not only the work of the staff, but each of you as well to get it to where it is this evening.
All right, thank you Commissioner. All in favor of the motion to approve the annual funds ordinance as outlined in the staff report? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion regarding the capital project funds ordinance? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Budget's adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Okay. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a resolution establishing an environmental and energy stewardship subcommittee, and I will get us started on this item. All right, so Commissioners, as we've discussed at a couple of our recent commission meetings, this is for consideration of creating one additional subcommittee or working group of the county commission. As you all know, we have established subcommittees to focus on implementation of our work around affordable housing as well as early childhood education. So this would be the creation of one additional commission subcommittee and working group focused on the environmental and energy stewardship elements of our strategic plan. And we discussed this at our last meeting two weeks ago, and now we are going to consider the resolution that would actually create it. And if the resolution is adopted, as outlined in the resolution, we will appoint three commission members to serve on the subcommittee working group, and so we could also then proceed to appoint the three initial members. But I'd like to just read the resolution. It's not really long, but just to review it and make sure there's no questions. All right. Resolution establishing an environmental and energy stewardship subcommittee. Whereas North Carolina General Statutes 153A76 authorizes a board of commissioners to create, change, abolish, and consolidate offices, positions, departments, boards, commissions, and agencies of the government, of the county government in order to promote orderly and efficient administration of county affairs. Whereas recognizing that climate science and observations of climate change are having a dangerous, are having dangerous impacts on human populations and the environment, this board recognizes a duty and obligation to provide leadership in responding to the climate crisis. Whereas this board has established a strategic priority to foster environmental and energy stewardship in Buncombe County, to give rise to high-quality air, water, farmland, and renewable energy for future generations, including efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and preserve farmland and environmentally sensitive tracts. Whereas, in order to facilitate the purposes and intents of this strategic priority and related goals, this board is of the opinion that it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of the county to appoint a subcommittee of its membership as a climate and environment working group to review and provide recommendations to this board on items related to these strategic priorities. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows. One, that the Board of Commissioners hereby establishes an environmental and energy stewardship subcommittee. Two, that the subcommittee will have six or seven members to be determined by the board at a later date. This subcommittee will be comprised as follows. Three county commissioners, each appointed to serve a term of two years or until their term on the commission expires, whichever occurs first, beginning July 1st, 2021. Three or four community members appointed by the board. And I believe the intent is that the initially appointed commissioners will further deliberate about the ultimate size of the subcommittee, either six or seven members, and would provide some recommendations regarding options for the board to consider on the appointment of the initial, the additional community members. Community members will be appointed to serve a term of two years, limited to two consecutive terms. And two community members will initially be appointed to serve one-year terms, but these initial appointments will not count toward the two-term limit. And the idea there of course is to create staggered terms so that all these members don't come up for, they don't expire at the same time. Three, that in order to provide recommendations for action to this board, the subcommittee is authorized to examine opportunities for environmental and energy stewardship, including but not limited to the following: conservation easement strategies, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, renewable energy development and access, preservation of farmlands and natural resources, solar and other renewable energy, solid waste management and recycling, air and water quality, green building. Four, that the subcommittee may establish a set of bylaws, a meeting schedule, and other business necessities in order to carry out its business. Five, that the subcommittee may, may be staffed by county personnel through the county manager's office. Six, that this subcommittee will serve as an advisory body to the county commission and has no authority to bind, to bind Buncombe County. Seven, that this resolution is effective upon adoption this 15th day of June, 2021. And so that's the resolution. Commissioners, are there any questions about the proposed resolution? All right, well I will make, so we, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution. If this is passed, then we can move on to appoint the three initial commission members. But I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. We have a motion in second, further discussion? I had some other thing I wanted to say. When I was reading it, I had it in my head and now I've forgotten what it is. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm very excited that we're moving forward with this. This has been under discussion for a while and, and feels like a great way to, to build on the momentum and thankful to, to staff that have been at the helm of a lot of these efforts and excited to build out a larger team of folks who are moving, moving our work in these critical areas forward.
All right, thank you Chairman. Any other comments? I'll say a couple of things, I can't remember what the thing is, I forgot, but I'll just say, I'm, I'm excited about this too. You know, I think this is a, we, we live in a community where there's a lot of interest in seeing local government provide leadership to support these goals. People really care about protecting what makes Buncombe County a truly unique and beautiful place to live, and we want to see that. That's still the case for our kids and the people who will live here after, after them. It's not easy, as Commissioner Presley noted, this is, people are moving here from all over the country. We're going to see a lot of population growth in the foreseeable future, and we've got to figure out ways to keep this place a great place to live, even as we're experiencing a lot of development pressure, and we're going to see a lot of change, but we've got to make sure we, we can preserve the things that people really love about Asheville and Buncombe County and these mountains, even as we wrestle with being a growing community. And then outside of working to help protect this local place that we all love so much, they also want to see leadership to address what's really the, probably the most pressing challenge facing our society today in terms of the climate crisis. And so we're, we're a small community in the big scheme of things regarding how we respond to that crisis, but we're a community that I think can provide leadership and to kind of show what it looks like for a community that takes these challenges seriously. And you know, the federal government has a role to play, but they can't solve all these problems. It's going to take action at all levels of our society to really do what we need to do to keep our kids safe for the future, and that's what this is about. So I'm really excited we can do this. I think this is going to be a dynamic space for really exploring options for how we can expand our already, our already good work on this. You know, just last year, the county commission, and it was a unanimous vote, and I was, I was glad it was, you know, we approved what was the largest solar project developed by any local government in North Carolina history. We're putting solar on over 40 of our county buildings, our schools, our community college buildings, and it's just a great clean energy project, but we also saw from doing that, that it's clearly a less expensive way to produce power for our public buildings. So it's a great project for our taxpayers, it's a great project for cleaner air and cleaner energy, but it's also just a start. We know we need to kind of, we need, we know we have to scale this work up, because we're doing good things, but we're not at the right scale that's needed to respond to this COVID problem. So this committee is about thinking about how we can, we can build on that foundation. So thank you all for your consideration.
I'll say one more thing, what I'm excited about with, for this, and that's, you know, we can't, we can't move ourselves into this, into this century and, and tackle the climate crisis without expanding and improving upon energy efficiency technologies and, and expanding the use of, you know, solar and battery storage and bringing new appliances to, to people. And we can't solve those goals without bringing that new equipment and, and old equipment to low and moderate income people. And we, and in doing so, we, we make this community more affordable and reducing people's power bills. And we can't do all that work without creating jobs. So, so that's, that's what I'm most excited about.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion regarding the initial appointments?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Parker Sloan, Commissioner Terry Wells, and Chairman Brownie Newman as the members of this subcommittee.
Second.
Further discussion?
Brownie, I would like to be on there. I mean, if we could look at, even if it's a staggered deal of being an alternate or something to stay in touch with what's going, I mean, if some, if one of them would like to step down or us do it in a one year or a six month.
All right, well I appreciate, I'm glad you're interested, and I, you know, I think that, you know, in some ways these subcommittees, you know, I think with the way we found them to work is that they don't, you know, we don't have the time to spend at the full commission meetings going into a lot of detail on all the different issues. I think that's part of why these subcommittees have proven to be really effective. They allow the commission to, they really expand our, the work we're doing in these areas, but I don't think it comes at taking time away from the commission, but it just allows a deeper dive. But I mean, these, these, these subcommittees of course are open to everyone, we're going to appoint three initial members, but they're open to everyone. And I think, you know, it'll be, you know, so I guess I'm just saying, I'm glad that you're interested. I would like for us to look for ways that we can include other Commissioners in this as well. We haven't, the resolution doesn't contemplate an alternate, but I would certainly be open to adding a position on that. We know we do that with the, the MPO appointments as well. We have an alternate position on there, so perhaps we could add that for this subcommittee as well. So can, let's take that under consideration if that's okay. Great. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and when we do, and Robert, when we, so I think the committee will do the bylaws as outlined in the resolutions, so when we do that, we will look at the idea of adding an alternate position to it as well in the bylaws, and then we can appoint a person for that position as well. Great. All right Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is the comprehensive facility study, and Mike Mace is going to present this item.
Thank you all for having me back again. My name is Rachel Nilson, I'm with CPL Architects and Engineers. I'm going to present where we are and an update on the comprehensive facilities assessment. As an agenda for tonight, we'll kind of go through a background, a summary of what we've done with this study, and again, you've seen a lot of this information here before, but we want to wrap up this entire piece. Review of the buildings and department assessments, space needs analysis, key drivers, and the capital planning project timeline and board opportunities as a part of that. So our priorities through this study were to look at ways to avoid leasing costs incurred by the county, to plan for and reduce maintenance costs, specifically looking at a 15-year plan, and to determine the best use of space and customer service for county departments. What we started with was the building assessments, and we looked at 38 buildings across the county. We performed 3D scans and we have all of those within our final deliverable. We looked at ratings and assessing each different part of each of those buildings and created a list of those deficiencies and maintenance items. a list of those deficiencies and maintenance items. We also performed site assessments at each of these buildings, so our team walked the sites with a civil engineer, we walked the sites with mechanical, electrical, plumbing, architecture, and interiors. We looked at constraints and opportunities on each of the sites, what zoning was a part of each of those sites, what setbacks were, so we understand opportunities that you have going forward on some of these, some of these properties that may not be utilized to their fullest extent. In terms of the space needs, we gave out a pretty extensive survey to all the departments, have all of that information from those departmental surveys recorded. We had two interviews with each of the departments, and so we got to dive into deeper detail on each of those items, and we had the survey information prior to those interviews, so we're able to ask a lot of follow-up questions from the interviews with those departments. We talked about growth, we talked about customer service models, we talked about ways in which the pandemic influenced how they were working and how they might potentially be working in the future, and we did also look at the telecommuting aspect of their jobs, who would be able to, what the impacts of that were. We looked at in terms of the building maintenance, so you all have seen this before, but just to summarize, ranked each of the buildings based on the ratings that they each received in each of the different categories, from a kind of worst to best in terms of an average condition of those, looking at three point five kind of as a baseline, and noting that about twenty-six buildings of the thirty-eight are under that three point five, a lot of that is due to age of facilities and due to, to some deferred maintenance that has happened over previous years and previous decades. And so looking at a way to catch up some of these buildings, to bring some of those average conditions back up, and to improve some of the code deficiencies within them. That building maintenance looks, the large costs within that building maintenance are roof replacements, and again, since we're talking about fifteen years, that includes a lot of roofs over the, all of the county buildings. HVAC unit replacements, same kind of thing, and again, that's because of the lifespan of a roof and the lifespan of an HVAC unit. Updates and finishes, and also to note that the fifteen-year plan does include escalation through fifteen years, and it's not just in today's costs. And the years kind of indicate target years for work in order to kind of separate this work over that fifteen-year period and prioritize some of it. Using, we use these maintenance costs in some of the decision-making that we looked at in terms of the analysis of these buildings, so noting which buildings are leased facilities, and again, those leased facilities are the yellow ones, and then the blue ones are buildings that we dove a lot deeper into because of our discussions with the departments and because of the customer service models and the department use and the staffing in terms of looking at really the best use of some of those spaces and the best needs for the departments. Looking at some of the priorities that came out of that, the Allport Building, which is thirty and forty-four Valley Street, the condition of that building was on the lower end of the spectrum, and so, and what the costs were in terms of maintenance for that, register of deeds, fifty-two Cox, the interchange building, fifty-nine Woodfin, and thirty-five Woodfin. And again, these really brought themselves to the forefront because of the departments within those spaces, as well as the conditions of some of those buildings. Looking at the drivers, again, we, that telecommuting was one of the big kind of discussions that we had about the impacts that that had moving forward into some of these other discussions. If telecommuting were to continue, that creates space specifically at Forty Cox and the interchange because of the nature of those two departments being the highest number in terms of current telecommuters. We looked at a consolidation of the HHS staff to Forty Cox in order to fully utilize that space and to really fill that, that building as it was intended to be, and that moves staff from thirty-five Woodfin. And so then we looked at the backfill of thirty-five Woodfin with a potential for forward-facing departments to have a kind of a one-stop shop for, as a customer service model for the citizens of Buncombe County. General Services moving to, basically increasing the scope of that fleet project to the phase one and phase two option, which would open up the Forty McCormick Facility where General Services is for potential for emergency management, creating a second ambulance location within the city. And then the need to vacate the space, the leased space at seventy-seven McDowell, and how that impacts the elections department and the ramifications of that.
Can I ask a question there?
Yes.
Maybe I've missed something here. We, we're moved out of the Board of Elections now, haven't we?
Yes.
But we've still got the lease on the building. How, how long does it look like we have on that? And then, does that go back two pages there of what we're going to do, I guess it's number twenty-five Board of Election that you have there, does that eliminate that amount of money? Or is that going to be rolled over into the new construction?
So I don't know the information on the, when the lease ends. The Board of Elections, yes, the line on here would eliminate that number there because that's maintenance costs on the leased facility, and so that was why we did this exercise, to understand which items on this list here would come off if you vacate any of those leases. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, I think so.
And so you all have seen a few iterations of this timeline, and again, this is really to look at, we needed to put some type of timeline together and some type of priority so that we could understand those potential escalation costs. And so what this does is it shows those priorities that I noted, those drivers really kind of falling mostly within that zero-to-two year, and then we've got a six, two-to-six-year timeframe, a six-to-ten, and a ten-to-fifteen, and that's also how our maintenance and all of our capital planning numbers break down in our larger deliverable. The two in red, the two facilities in red at Fifty Cox Avenue and at thirty and forty-four Valley Street, we've highlighted those because those are both opportunity projects or opportunity sites. With the proposed kind of changes that we're talking about here, those two properties both become available for board opportunities and for any possible redevelopment at those two sites. So I do want to mention that this, we've been developing this comprehensive facility study since about June, July of last year. We've obviously been looking at this primarily from both a facility standpoint, a department standpoint, and looking at it in terms of those maintenance, in terms of the space needs. This is a living document, what we are delivering, and I will, I will kind of reiterate this in the, when we kind of show you a little bit what the deliverable is, is meant to be brought back up every year and be looked at in terms of what, how have those priorities changed, how does that impact the bigger picture? And we understand that, that those priorities are going to be affected by funding availability, staff capacity in terms of delivering projects, community input, land availability. Some of these items may involve land acquisitions in order to facilitate new construction, and that obviously plays a big role in that. And then changes in service delivery, so again, keeping the customer service part of it to the forefront as some things may move more digital, as kiosks come onboard, as we are looking at the way in which you are delivering your services, that can impact some of these space needs. So as I mentioned, we recommend a review of this process on an annual basis, and this document on an annual basis as you move forward. Looking back, again, we touched on these site availabilities, these are the properties in the Cox Avenue area that are owned by the county currently, that present opportunities, and again, looking at those in 3D on the map. We have looked at these key drivers, that Forty Cox renovation, again, that facilitates the ability really to build some more offices in that building, to be able to house more manager-level positions potentially, as opposed to all cubicle-type spaces, so just filling that space out, again, as, as it needs to be. Fleet and General Services Complex, building that phase one and phase two of that project, and then planning for a forward-facing building. So this is the thirty-five Woodfin discussion about the planning aspects and really diving in a lot deeper to discussions with FJC, discussions with the departments moving in there, to understand the specific needs of each department and how all of that really lays out within the facility, and understanding how lobby space works and all of that. As I mentioned, our final deliverable is supposed to be a living document, so we've gone over a little bit of this before, but this is a PDF document that includes all of the files, all of the scans, everything that we've been looking at and we've been showing and talking to you about. It allows for staff within General Services to be able to search by building, to search by department, to access all of that information easily, and they will be able to maintain this and update this as needed, and then includes all of the summary information in a pretty easy-to-find location. And so our next step here is to basically sit down with the General Services Department, walk through that deliverable page by page, step by step, make sure that we've captured all the information in there, that is what we've done to date since June, July, and make sure that they understand where all of it is and how best to access it. So, and our request is to adopt, for you all to adopt the comprehensive facility study for county facilities, including PAC Library, but excluding all other libraries. And again, our next steps, Buncombe County staff plans to continue to gather community input about the regional library plan, and to look at involving the community more in some of those discussions, to, we will continue to evaluate and/or pilot alternative service options and present library recommendations at a future Board of Commissioners meeting, and we'll include those library capital needs in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, CIP. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioners, are there questions?
I have a question on Forty Cox Avenue. We just built that building, and we renovated the old Sears part, but what happened? Why are we coming back in a very short time? Are we going to spend more money? What did we do wrong? Did we blow, did we miscalculate what we wanted to do? I mean...
So I think part of it, and I was not involved with the project before, but I think what we're looking at with this telecommute model potential is that you're able to fit more departments within the building than you were able to before, because you have a shared workspace model, a shared office model, some, some kind of plan like that. And so what it needs because of that is a little bit more need potentially for private spaces for the people who aren't, so more of your manager-level positions are going to be more of who is probably working within the office as opposed to telecommuting. So there's a little bit of variance between who is telecommuting, who is working in the office that may necessitate that, that need. And I would assume that as that project moves forward, that there are deeper discussions and deeper dives into the specifics of those department needs, and really a true programming session that lays all of that out.
First, let me say, I like the idea of our forward-facing services being co-located at thirty-five Cox. I have very deep concerns about the Family Justice Center, and these are incredibly vulnerable members of our community, experiencing trauma and violence, and how deep have we gone into these conversations about protecting those victims, their safety, their confidentiality in this co-location, and are there opportunities for alternatives for the Family Justice Center to make sure that we, we do take care of those folks in our community?
So commissioners, you may recall that in the budget, there is a, there is money set aside to start that conversation. We have met with Family Justice Partners, and, but we have not gone deep into what that would look like. We've talked to them to make sure that we would protect the vulnerable, but we have not done a full study, so we've asked in the budget for the money to start this process, which would mean, do they stay, do we make sure, or do we even move in there? So that conversation is now ongoing, but that really kicks off right after this budget adoption.
Okay, thank you very much, I really appreciate that, Manager Bender.
And so like on the Family Justice Center piece in particular, like approval of the overall plan is not the final vote on those restructuring potential, like it would be a more specific plan that would come forward?
Yes.
Correct, we want to make sure that there's no interactions.
Yeah. Thank you for that consideration.
Because I just have a comment and a suggestion, the comment being, I'm really excited about the plan overall, it's really great that we're looking at, you know, underutilized buildings and our, the vacant spaces we have, and how to kind of reimagine all of that, how it fits together, and where we put our, put our staff and how they, they work best, that's fantastic. And then kind of looking at, it's really exciting to look at Cox Avenue and that redevelopment potential, that part of downtown, kind of southwest downtown Cox Avenue, it's tragically underdeveloped, there's a lot of parking lots and one-story buildings, it's, it really needs change, and we're one of the largest property owners there, so I think we could really take a leadership role in, in moving that forward, so that's exciting. That's my comment, I guess my suggestion would, or friendly amendment suggestion would be to, to approve this, but also exclude the PAC Library recommendation at this time, it's not something I'm opposed to, I just feel like we owe ourselves and the community more discussion around how to imagine the current building, and if and when to move it, and where it would go, and all of those discussions, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with what I know at this moment with, to put that into, you know, into writing in the form of a motion.
I agree with what Commissioner Sloan said there. I'm very supportive of us looking forward with this plan, and I really appreciate the fact that we put a pause on the libraries, but I do feel like we really need to look at PAC Library as well, and have more information about that before we make that definitive decision.
All right, so I'd like to, I'll make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the facility, the comprehensive facilities plan, but minus any recommendations at this time regarding library facilities. And my comment would be, I mean, I'm also very excited about the Cox Avenue redevelopment potential, and it sounds like the staff are planning to bring back sort of additional ideas for how that planning process would work, and at that time, if the staff want to continue to look at the idea of the PAC Library potentially being part of that, then there can be further discussions about that concept at that time, and we could look at, you know, sort of the conceptual pros and cons... And we could look at, you know, sort of the conceptual pros and cons of the existing location versus a new location. We could look at if we do determine that it's a compelling enough idea that we want to have a more detailed analysis of it, you know, what kind of resources would be needed as part of that process to really study that idea, things like that. So the motion would be to approve the facilities plan, but at this time, we're not making any recommendations specifically on the, on any of the library pieces.
You need a second?
Yes, sir. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Just one other comment also just to say, I'm glad we're doing this analysis of the maintenance. You know, I think a lot of times like new buildings, new projects, I mean, we all love to support, you know, exciting new groundbreaking projects, but a lot of times just taking care of what you have doesn't get the attention that it deserves. And it's the majority of what our responsibilities are is taking care of what we have. Every now and then we will need to build new buildings, but a lot of times it's just making sure we're taking care of the real estate we have. And I'm glad that we're really looking at what those future investments are needed to do that. So thank you, everyone who helped put this together. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is consideration of the Buncombe-Madison Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And Angela Ledford is here to help us out and Nate Pennington's coming up. And Jennifer Barnett helping with this one too? Not sure. Anyway, all right, hello.
Good evening, Chairman Neiman and Commissioners. I am Angie Ledford, Emergency Management Division Manager for the county. I'll be assisted by Planning Director Nate Pennington for the presentation. And tonight we are bringing you the Buncombe-Madison Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. And I'll provide a little bit of background and history on prior planning efforts. At its root, mitigate means to cause to be less severe. And the concept of hazard mitigation is the concept of making the effects of identified hazards less severe, thereby reducing their long-term risk to life and property. With the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, the federal government required local jurisdictions to have a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan in place in order to be eligible for federal disaster assistance and federal mitigation funding. At the same time, in North Carolina, Senate Bill 300 also required local jurisdictions to have an approved mitigation plan in place to be eligible for state disaster assistance funding. FEMA has established the elements, format, and process that local jurisdictions must follow in order for their plan to be approved. And the full plan document was included with your agenda packet. And in Appendix C, it lays out the steps that we had to follow for the planning process. Initially, each county was required to have a mitigation plan. And municipalities had the option of joining with their county's plan or creating their own standalone plan. All of the municipalities in Buncombe County chose to be a part of the county plan. And our initial hazard mitigation plan was approved in 2005 with a subsequent update being approved in 2011. After our 2011 update was approved, there was a move at both the state and federal level to regionalize hazard mitigation planning in order to streamline the number of plans that were being submitted for approval. The North Carolina Division of Emergency Management established hazard mitigation planning regions and paired Buncombe and Madison County as a region. Our first and current regional hazard mitigation plan was approved in 2016 and it expires in July of 2021. This brings us to the current plan update, which received FEMA approval at the end of May and we are bringing to you for adoption today. This plan includes both Buncombe and Madison Counties as well as all of the municipalities located in each county. One of the requirements for a hazard mitigation plan update is to review data on hazard occurrences and disaster declarations since the date of the previous plan. In our region, there have been three disaster declarations since 2016. COVID-19 for both Buncombe and Madison Counties and then two flooding declarations that were just in Madison County. It is of note that Buncombe County did experience minor flooding in both of those instances, but nothing to the level of disaster declaration. I stated earlier that FEMA has established the process and elements that are required for a hazard mitigation plan, and this graphic demonstrates that process. FEMA and the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management requests that plans be submitted for review 12 months prior to their expiration in order to complete the review process prior to the expiration of the previous plan. This means that the data collection process for the update must begin two to two and a half years prior to the expiration of your current plan. In order to meet that timeline, the work on our current plan update began in 2018. The North Carolina Division of Emergency Management set aside hazard mitigation funding to cover the cost of plan updates for regions throughout the state. This grant was directly managed at the state level and they selected ESP Associates as the contractor for the update of our regional mitigation plan. In late 2018, ESP began the data collection process on hazard occurrences and damages since the 2016 plan. A mitigation planning committee was established to include representation from all participating jurisdictions, and a kickoff meeting was held in August of 2019. Opportunities for public input occurred from September to December of 2019, and this included an in-person meeting as well as an online survey posted on each jurisdiction's website to allow the public to have input in the plan development. Due to COVID-19, our mitigation strategy meeting was held virtually in August of 2020, and the updated plan was submitted to the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management in September of 2020, then forwarded to FEMA with a recommendation for approval in December 2020. In late May, we received a letter from FEMA stating that the updated plan had been approved pending adoption. Based on the data collection and risk assessment, this graphic shows our hazard rankings in terms of their likelihood of occurrence and their potential impact, with our highest risks being severe winter weather, tornadoes and severe thunderstorms, flooding, cyber threats, and geological hazards such as landslides. From this assessment, the next step is to develop mitigation actions to address each of the top-ranked hazards. And in developing these actions, we take a twofold approach. Not only do we want to protect our current development, but we also want to guide future development so that we are not increasing our vulnerabilities.
Good evening. This kind of dovetails nicely with a number of things we've been talking about today. And as your Planning Director, I can't get enough planning, no matter what plan it is. So we've talked about how this will sync up quite nicely with the comprehensive plan. We know we have minimum standards that we have to follow, but we know we're at a unique area with our unique topography and some very interesting challenges as they relate to landslides and things of that nature. This slide basically represents a menu of different things that you can look at from different perspectives when it comes to mitigation. So the hazard mitigation plan, as Angie mentioned, covers a number of threats for our area specifically. And I would like to mention too, that we are one of the few states that's a partner agency with FEMA. So that means if we have a question, if I have a flood question, I can call Raleigh through the North Carolina Emergency Management Division rather than call FEMA directly. And if you've been through a hurricane or another event like that, you know specifically how much easier and much better relationship that is than working your way immediately and directly through FEMA itself. Some of the actions that we looked at in terms of starting to sync up with other plans are making sure that we thoroughly vet our hazard mitigation process into the planning process and involve every jurisdiction, especially in a county that includes multiple municipalities. So we want to make sure that we are always keeping up to date on the threats that we're experiencing. Obviously, for the first time and on this scale, we experienced COVID and we had to dust off what we learned from 1918 on a massive scale. And so we had to learn a lot when it came to that process, including how to stand up a virtual EOC. The other things you can do is look at higher standards. So for instance, the community rating system gives you ability to have flood discounts if you adopt higher standards. That needs to be done syncing up as part of the comp plan as well. Asheville is a community rating system member. There are plenty of other organizations, jurisdictions across North Carolina that are part of that, but it is a national program through the National Flood Insurance Program. And part of this as well is the primary tenet is to limit the loss of life and limit damage to property, especially when you have flood events. Other things that we'll look at as well, and we've done a good job so far, we can always improve upon those, is evaluating Buncombe County's regulations that guide development on steep slopes. We know as we continue to develop, we're continuing to see land is our most precious resource and there's very little of it, which means increasingly we're seeing more properties that have flood plain on them, more properties that are steep, more properties that have colluvial soils. And those, of course, are soils that did not originate on a property, which means at some point they slid onto a property. So very unstable. Looking at things and constantly improving upon things like road construction standards, had a conversation with Terry about this just the other day. Looking and working with the fire marshal to make sure that we have the most up-to-date standards so that if we do have to get out or evacuate a vulnerable population or a commercial development, that we have adequate access to get people out there immediately. We all know that we experience flash flood events and they can come on quite quickly. And create and implement hazard mitigation recommendations through the comprehensive planning process. And that's why this plan plays so nicely with that process as well. And the new committee that just got created. So what we'll do is we'll continue to evaluate, adjust, look at our development ordinances. It's a living document. They're always under audit. We're always looking for ways to improve upon the processes, understanding that more and more people are coming here and they have high expectations. They don't always work here, but we can certainly evaluate on a constant basis. And what that, well, that's exactly what I said. So you're always auditing it. The next thing's important as well. So I'm going to read real quick, a next-generation E911 system, which we're 98% compliant on. We have got to make sure we stay in that compliance threshold. What that means is this system, if we had a disaster here, we could run it in another part of the state. And what that does is that allows somebody to send text messages. In order to make sure that system works correctly, you've got to have correct sequencing with your addresses and you have to make sure that all that data is constantly up to date. And educate the public regarding hazard mitigation. Can't say it enough. I don't know how many times I've received calls, "We never flooded in '04, but no two floods are created equally." And you'll be surprised how quickly people can forget a flood event, a fire event, any number of events. Angie?
So this graphic just demonstrates how we take those mitigation actions that Nathan just talked about and translate those into an action plan. The key elements of that are defining the hazard that we're addressing, giving it a priority, making sure we're assigning a department for being responsible for implementing that action, looking at potential funding sources, and then establishing an implementation schedule. And then we continue to track the status of each action. So our ask tonight is for adoption of the FEMA-approved Buncombe-Madison Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which will take the place of our current plan, which expires on July the 6th.
Excellent. Thank you very much for these updates on all the planning around emergency preparedness. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And is any action needed from the board at this time to adopt this?
Adopt a draft plan.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. All right. The next item is consideration of a budget amendment for sales tax revenue pass-through. And Jennifer Barnett is going to be back to present this item.
Good evening again. So the first budget amendment before you this evening is a request to increase the existing budget in our Fire and Service District's Special Revenue Fund. We conducted a year-end projection and I continued to see circulating around a professional listserv about how astounded across the state the different jurisdictions are around our sales tax revenues. So we established the budget based on those pre-COVID and COVID anticipated sales tax numbers. However, those continue to exceed our expectations. So we are requesting for an increase of $1 million to be added to the special districts fund. This is the fund where we collect the sales, collect that revenue and pass it back through to those fire service districts. And then recently added was the Asheville City Schools to that as well. We've received four months and have received a total of 5.6 million. And so we are asking for the $1 million to ensure that we have sufficient budget to cover that additional expense for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next is consideration of a budget amendment for a state lottery application project, security hardware update for Buncombe County schools.
Yes. So before this commission previously was the request where Buncombe County schools had applied for the request of $1 million to the North Carolina Education Lottery. The funding has been approved through the state and we are requesting to establish the project in the total amount of $1 million on behalf of Buncombe County schools in our Public School ADM Capital Fund. So this establishes the expenditures and the revenues from the lottery fund for this project.
Is there a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next is consideration of a budget amendment for Substance Use Disorder Justice Support Grant.
And so I'm actually going to turn the initial presentation over to Sarah Gaten, who is here with the Sheriff's Office, to provide you with some background information surrounding the grant. And then the three recommended motion and requested actions will be at the conclusion of her presentation, which will include the budget amendment. Turn it over to Sarah. Thank you.
Great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Long meeting. Yes. Well, thank you for having us. I've got a couple individuals here that are pleased to share with a little bit more detail on some programming, if it pleases you all. So I'm here to announce a $700,000 grant that's coming down from Health and Human Services to support access to treatment and resources for individuals who are involved in the Justice Department. And it is a partnership with multiple of our county agencies, which is very exciting, the Justice Department as well as Health and Human Services. So again, $700,000 over a 20-month term. And what we have here is a target population, individuals that we're focusing our services on. And so what we're doing with this grant is we're expanding current services to be able to serve more individuals. And the highlight here is individuals who are already in the system, who are trying to prevent them from getting arrested. So they're either assigned to pre-trial or they're assigned to the Child Support Division. They have been released in the community already by the judicial actors, but for whatever reason, their unmet needs and active addiction, they're coming back into our detention facility. And so this grant works to remediate that. So two focal points from this grant. Number one, pre-arrest diversion or rearrest diversion, trying to get individuals out of jail or keep them from coming back. And number two, resources to address the unmet needs, specific to substance use, but also poverty-related issues. And you'll see some of those basic needs down there from shelter, food, clothing, recovery support, and some basic life stabilization needs. There's a lot of opportunity in this grant to meet specific needs as they arise. And the grant was crafted around identified needs and gaps in services that we already have. have. So this was really informed by current processes, programs, and working to meet those needs. This picture right here is individuals of our local community. They're all leaders in our community, and most all of them are employed in human services fields. And every single one of them has come out of active addiction and the justice system. They've worked really, really hard to climb their way out, some with and some without resources. The signage is going to go up around the county to inspire hope, to inspire encouragement that treatment, that recovery, that breaking the cycle of recidivism is in fact possible, and all of these individuals are living testimonies of that. I've got some posters here. If you all would like to see some of those, I know you guys have had a lot of PowerPoints. If you want to put your hands on something and get moving, that's fine. And also Mr. Mike Roberts and Ms. Sue Polson are here, and they are pleased to share. Again, they've been through our justice systems. They've been through the child support. They've been through probation. They've been through jail. They know what it's like to have services and to not have services. So if you all are interested, I would love for them to share a bit of their stories. Does that work?
Yes.
Fantastic. Hey, guys.
Hey, good evening.
Well, this is a nice break in between all the numbers and jargon, right? Yeah, I appreciate this platform. I'll keep it brief. I know we've been here for a long time. I just wanted to reiterate and kind of humanize what these resources look like. Without the help of pretrial, probation, and the other resources out in the community, I think I would continue to do what I was doing out there, be in and out of the system, and be a homeless dredge on society like I was. So if we look, if we want to talk about the boring numbers, right? If I was able to access these services much earlier, maybe I wouldn't have cost our taxpayers so much funds. So I just really appreciate the forward progression of our Buncombe County resources. I will continue to be out there in recovery and trying to help everything that you guys do here. So thanks for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Hey. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm nervous, no matter how many times I do this or other platforms, but I am a person in recovery, and I have been arrested and jailed multiple times in Buncombe County, Henderson County, and then other states. 12 to 15 years in and out of different systems in different states, no resources. It wasn't until I got a drug charge, until I was taken seriously, that I'd ask for treatment, I'd ask for help, and I didn't qualify because I was only a thief, because I stole to support my habit. I am a Buncombe County Drug Court graduate. And without Drug Court to help fund for sober living, dentist appointments, all the things that I would need in the beginning, like I don't think I would be where I'm at. It'll be July 24th. Will be eight years since my last incarceration. And during that time, I, like I said, graduated Drug Court. I've been a sober living manager. I got my Certified Peer Support Specialist certification, and I am currently Executive Director for Sunrise Community for Recovery and Wellness. So resources, peer support, it all works. I'm living proof, and I know what it was like to be in jail with that substance use group, only coming maybe once every couple of weeks, once an hour, to myself being able to go into the jail and sit with the ladies and be like, "That's where I was housed for four and a half months," and just watching them melt and be able to connect. So yeah, I am so grateful to be a part of this change and the resources that are being given, and there's still some gaps, so let's get it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. We really appreciate it.
So again, the services that we're offering are expanding what we have, and some of the justice partners with justice services, they've got the diversion courts, and so we've got a staff that's going to be nested up in there in that division, working for the pretrial population, using the structures that they currently have in place to be able to serve a new population of individuals. In the child support, we're really expanding what we're doing in the jail with the MAP program, identifying what the resources are and having a peer navigator to connect them, as well as what the linkage to care program is doing with the Health Department. So incredibly exciting to be able to move forward in these pieces. So the budget, again, we've named it. It will staff two positions, provide overdose reversal kits for everybody who's in the programs, and also everyone who's coming out of the jail. Up until this point, we've really only been able to provide the reversal kits to individuals who have identified opioid use. At this point, we'll be able to ask every individual, "Would you benefit from a kit or with somebody you know?" And so that's exciting to be able to expand that, as well as training for both the participants of the program, as well as the judicial actors that are all partners within our programming. Did I skip one? Nope. So again, our program partners are the Justice Department. We've got Tiffany Iannaccio here supporting it. Philip Parton with the Child Support. Health and Human Services has been an active partner, and of course, the Sheriff's Department, providing the leadership and the guidance on this program. So at this point, I'm open to any questions, and I know our folks in, Mr. Roberts and Ms. Polson are open to questions as well, if you all have any, and then we can move to the budget amendment.
All right. Thank you so much. Are there any questions? There's going to be a couple of different motions we need to make on this, but are there any questions at this time?
Just a quick note of congratulations for, this is a large grant to receive and is obviously reflective of really tremendous work happening. Thank you all for sharing your stories and sitting through our meeting. We're glad to have you here and very appreciative of the work, excited about how it's going to be able to expand.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, we need approval of the grant, and then second, we need approval of a budget amendment, and then third, we need approval of one grant-funded position. Is there a motion to accept the grant?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the related budget amendment?
Motion to approve related budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve one grant-funded position, as long as the grant funding is available?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all very much. We really appreciate what you're doing, and best wishes going forward in this important work.
And congrats on the NACO award as well for the MAP program.
All right. Commissioners, next up is the NCACC Voting Delegate. And my agenda says that I'm actually presenting this item. So here goes. So the 11th Annual Conference of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners is going to be held on Saturday, August the 14th. It's in New Hanover County this year. And is it all in-person this year? Is it like last year, I think it was all virtual? How's it structured?
It's a hybrid this year. Hybrid? So you could be there or you could be online.
Okay. So we need to appoint a member to be the Buncombe County representative for the annual conference. So we need to decide who that would be. And so this is just for a discussion, to see who might be interested and...
Who's going to attend that, where they can represent the county.
Yeah. And so is it true that they could either physically attend, or if they want to attend but not travel, they could also participate virtually?
Correct.
Okay. And these conferences are always great. They're very informative. I've been a couple of times during my time of the commission. So is there anybody, this isn't something we've had previous discussion about, so it's just kind of coming up right now. Is there anybody who has a really strong interest in attending and representing our county at the event?
Is there a current member?
Well, it's really just to attend this particular event and be the voting delegate at this event. Yeah.
It's not a member, it's got a...
I think whoever we appoint is really just to attend and vote at this particular meeting, or are there other voting responsibilities after the event?
It is just for this meeting, and typically you would have a delegate and alternate.
And I don't think you have to commit to traveling there. You could kind of look at your schedule and determine if you want to physically travel to the New Hanover event, or you can participate from the comfort of your home. If we, when's the deadline for when we need to make this appointment?
We have to respond by August 9th.
Okay. So we don't have to make this decision tonight. If folks would like to think about it, that's fine, too. Is the conference just one day? Isn't it usually a couple of days?
12 through the 14th is a conference.
12 through the 14th.
And obviously, it's important because you will also have the ability to vote on certain information that will be presented during the actual conference.
This is when sometimes it's legislation that they're going to advocate for, stuff like that.
Okay. And Avril, you said we need to make the appointment by what date?
We have to respond and turn it in by August the 9th. So we have the next meeting in July, or at least August 3rd, for us to bring this back.
Okay. Why don't we plan on trying to make this decision at our next meeting? So everyone think about it, and if you're interested, if you could just let Avril and I know, and so we'll plan on making a decision. It's important that we be represented there. All right. Very good. The next item on the agenda is a rescission of local state of emergency, and Angela Ledford is going to be back to present this item.
Good evening again. I promise this one will be quicker. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, this board declared a local state of emergency and thereby activated the Buncombe County Emergency Management Plan and all applicable mutual assistance compacts and agreements. Due to the success of masking, social distancing precautions, and COVID-19 vaccination efforts, we have seen a decline in COVID-19 cases in Buncombe County. COVID vaccine is now widely available at multiple pharmacies and private providers throughout the county. And on June the 23rd, Buncombe County's COVID vaccine operations will transition from the site at AB Tech to in-house at the HHS building, with pop-up outreach events scheduled at various times and locations throughout the county. As we continue to move toward normal operations, there is no longer a need for day-to-day activities of the Emergency Operations Center. Therefore, emergency services recommends rescinding the local state of emergency. However, we urge anyone who has not received their COVID-19 vaccine to do so as soon as possible, and individuals who are not yet fully vaccinated are reminded to continue with masking and social distancing practices. And staff will continue to monitor the situation and provide updates as needed.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the rescission of the local state of emergency?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Commissioners, we have a couple of board appointments to look at. First is the Asheville-Buncombe Technical Community College Board of Trustees, and Hamon Chu Carvier has served one term. I'll make a motion to reappoint Hamon Chu Carvier.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then on the Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, Trudy Logan has served one term. I will make a motion to reappoint Trudy Logan.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have a couple of announcements to make.
Can I just give a quick update? Sorry. During the last meeting, there was a request for information on for early childhood education. We had a vacancy available, and there was asked to pass along the applicants and if there were any diversity in the applicants. And there was at the time, so we did extend the application process. We've only received one additional application, so I don't know what the board's situation is. There is, it was a diverse candidate, so I don't know if you want to wait and receive more applications, or do we want to go ahead with that interview process? So do we want to add that with the other interviews for the comprehensive plan interviews? Like have a couple of those as well, or how do we want to handle that?
How many applicants do we have to interview?
It will be four applicants now.
Why don't we try to do this on the 13th and go ahead and get that done?
Commissioner Beachrara, would that be okay?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I did. Yes, that sounds great.
I know you want, I guess you will be included virtually if you want to do...
If that works, I would be calling in for that.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Great. On July 13th at 3:00 PM, county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On July 13th at 5:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. I think we misspoke earlier when we said we didn't have a need for any closed session. We do have a need for a brief one, I believe. Mr. Frue, could you explain the need?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this microphone seems to be working. General statute 143, 31811A5, want to discuss a possible opportunity to acquire real property. We just anticipate some direction from the board.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into closed session for the purposes outlined by Mr. Frue? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? After hearing from staff about this item, we intend to go back into open session, take no further business, and simply adjourn. We're in closed session.